Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Next up is, oh, you know what?
We didn't do a motion to come out of closed.
Ah, I jumped around, didn't I? Let's pause it, let's rewind. Motion to come out of closed session. We're gonna have to go back and make that vote because we can't vote before close, coming out of closed. So I need a motion to come out of closed session.
I move that the school board haven't been in closed session pursuant to a proper motion to come out of closed session.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that? Hearing none, then, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. So next up is certification of our closed session, do we have a certification?
Whereas the Franklin City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore it be resolved that the Franklin City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, any discussion? All those in favor of certification signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So now we're down to motions that I jumped through trying to move this meeting right along, so do we have any motions from closed session in regards to the personnel agenda?
I move to approve the personnel agenda as presented with a modified change to number nine.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
We have lots of seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Next up is approval of the agenda, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I shall move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Item three, consent agenda, we do not have any items on the consent agenda this week, so next up is Human Resources and Federal Programs, Dr. Natalie Hollerin will be entertaining us with that tonight.
Okay, good evening, we have approximately forty-five new policies, VSBA policies for first review. Those are the codes in the left-hand column and the revisions, the shortcut to the revisions, and you should have, I believe, a hundred, around a hundred and seventy-one pages of redlined items for consideration for the VSBA. It's moving by itself, yes. No, I'm not, I ain't gonna put up, so. Maybe someone is pressing up there and control is changing, you know?
No.
No.
I don't know, I'm still trying to do. Again, this is, I believe, the first reading and for approval of the next board meeting.
Ms. Moore is so talented, she doesn't even need her hands to do her job. All right, and of course, these are the redlined markups that show, of course, when you're looking through these, anything that is stricken through is what's coming out, anything that's underlined is what's being added, just for clarification as you look through these, this is just first reading, we are not approving these tonight, so over the next couple of weeks, take a, take an opportunity to look through those because at our meeting at the end of the month, we'll be going, oh, on the twenty-fourth, we'll be going through these, twenty-fourth?
No, seventeen.
Yeah, seventeen. Math was not my strong suit in school. So we'll be coming back to these. All right.
Madam Chair, I'd like to suggest to the board members that when you go through this, you block out quite a bit of time because there's a lot of material here, there are a lot of changes, most of these resulted from legislative changes this year, so there's just a lot there, so it's gonna take a while.
Yes, I actually went through them between yesterday and today, it took me quite a bit of time to go through them, so, yeah. All right, Dr. Hollerin, I do have one question before we move on from policies, I know there is a transgender policy and that is not included in this update that came in through VSBA last month, so I'm assuming that will be coming to us at some point because that's, that's, that's coming into place because of changes in the law, so it's from a legal standpoint, correct?
Yes, correct, absolutely.
All right.
Okay, federal programs, once again, we have another funding source to consider with DECA, more specific stipulations than the other, ESSER funding, this is one by itself as well, so I gotta go to speed room, okay, so it's the American University Plan Act, ESSER three, funding application process and plans that are required. If I just slide it with my hands, I guess I'll just do this. Okay, the primary purpose of this funding source is to help schools safely reopen and sustain the safety operations of schools that address like the previous funding sources of the impact that COVID has had and continues to have on the school divisions. Ninety percent of the allocation is awarded to school divisions, which means Franklin City Public Schools will in total be allocated five million, seven hundred thirty-two thousand, two hundred sixteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. What the Department of Education did was on April thirtieth, when the notification went out, they made available pretty much in Omega, approximately three million, eight hundred twenty-one thousand, four hundred seventy-seven dollars, ninety-one cent, but unlike the other funding sources, we can't start spending to get reimbursement, we're gonna now go with the stipulations of what needs to be in our application that's due September first before we can even start spending and requesting reimbursement on these funds, so it's more specifics with this application funding. And if they noted, what's noted at the bottom, you'll see, is that the ESSER three funding, which is this part of funds, may be reimbursed concurrently with the other funding sources, whereas with the other funding sources previously, you had to spend one part before you could spend like the two-point-five million that we have a second funding source, so that's great, we can use it concurrently, which means very close monitoring needs to occur with multiple funding sources in addition to the other federal funds that we already have in the division. And this is just a quick snippet, I know you all can't see that, this is what some of the allowable use of funding is pretty similar to the other uses of funding, so hopefully you have some time to take a look at all the many uses for the funds. Something that's very different in particular to the funding source, this, these funds, a big emphasis is placed on addressing learning loss, and pretty much twenty percent of the funds must be used to measure and address the academic impact of loss of instruction time on all students due to implementation of evidence-based interventions, and those are things such as interventions through summer learning, summer enrichment, extended day, comprehensive after-school, extended learning items, things that we've been addressing and discussing addressing this summer and continuing into the next school year, but definitely twenty percent must be set aside to support that. And also, the LEAs must also ensure that the interventions respond to students' academic, social-emotional, and mental health needs and address the impact, of course, of the pandemic on students disproportionately impacted by the pandemic, so that's very specific. We have two requirement, two required plans, as you'll see on this side, that we're gonna talk more about in a minute, we have the ESSER plan as well as the LEA plan for safe return to school, in-person instruction and community service, that's very specific to the grant application. And it's a little more specifics provided here about the two plans, you have the ESSER plan, within ninety days of receiving the funding, we must have a plan prepared, posted to our website to support the key items and include the key items that you see in this bulging. Now ninety days means from April thirtieth, which is the date that the award was, we were made aware of the award, which means July thirtieth, we must have that plan posted. What's great is that we already have some plans, transition plans and things in place that we've already been working on, but we need to make sure that we tweak the plans that we currently have to ensure that we include these key bullets. For example, how will, how will the funds be used to implement the prevention and mitigation strategies, how will the funds be used to address the learning loss, loss of instructional time, and again, at least twenty percent must be there, as well as how will the remaining funds be used to support the impact that COVID has had and continue to have in relations to return to school and instruction and learning loss, so they're putting a really big emphasis on that because they're aware that this past school year with all the transition, hybrid and all that, that there's definitely a learning loss that's occurred, so how will divisions address it, and they want to make sure that we have plans in place specifically, and it must be connected, or a link must be submitted along with our application to the plans when the grant applications are submitted. And there's a stakeholder engagement component, in developing the plan, that each LEA must engage in meaningful consultation with stakeholders to include the various stakeholder groups, ensuring that it's in languages that parents and communities members can understand, and provide an opportunity for the public to provide input as to how we plan to use the funding. So it's not a matter of the school divisions looking at our data and our needs and saying, this is what we're requesting from the Department of Education to use the funds, is we present it to the community and the public as well and consider their input, so that's why it has to be noted in the application, what stakeholder engagement occurred, how we can address some of the things that they've talked about in our plan of consideration. In addition to that, a plan for safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services within thirty days, which meant not April thirtieth, May thirtieth, that there needs to be a plan in place, for now, what's great about that, we've had a plan in place from the beginning of the school year for transitioning, as well as in March when we transition, so at this moment, that suffices for that, but when we submit the application in September, we need to be sure to update to include these key components, so it's great that we're not starting from scratch, we've had, you know, plans and everything in place, so we just need to make sure that we include some of these key areas such as how will, how it will maintain the health and safety of students, educators, and other staff, including describing the extent to which it has adapted policies aligned with CDC recommendations, as well as how will our plan ensure continuity of services, to include services to address students' academic needs, as well as the social, emotional, mental health, and other needs, so we have to give, be a little more specific in our plan, but again, the great thing is we have a plan in place that's on our website for now, that will be tweaked. And then additional requirements for both plans, again, both LEA plans must be, again, in understandable and uniform format, we know we use a lot of jargon as well as IOP, IEA, and all that, make sure it's spelled out so everyone is aware of what we're addressing, written in languages that parents, again, can understand, particularly parents of limited English proficiency, ensuring, ensuring that upon request by a parent who or individual with disability, that we can ensure that, as defined by the ADA, that we provide in alternate format accessible to parents, as well as, again, made publicly available on our website, so for both plans, again, we'll need to have a link in our submitted application to our actual plan. And this is a big one here, and I believe Mr. Rider is gonna, I think, touch on this later on as well, public comment and periodic review, this is very new, in developing the plan, the LEA must seek and take into account public comment, the second bullet, at least every six months through September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, with the duration of the grant, the LEA must review and revise as appropriate its plan, seek and take into account public comment during the review and revision process, so as we make revisions every six months or so, we need to, another public comment section is taken into account, so keeping the community and all stakeholders aware of our recommendations for revisions, as well as addressing the extent to which it adopted policies, if we adopt any policies that's aligned with the updated CDC guidance if applicable. And then I thought it was great that the VDOE included just a little snippet because we have so many different funding sources related to CARES that they just gave us another quick snapshot of, the various funding sources that we have, ESSER one, two, and three, the period of performance, which you can see, all the period of performances, they start March thirteenth, twenty-twenty, but we know that ESSER two, which is the two-point-five million we received, we can't start using that until the ESSER one part, which is hopefully June thirtieth, is where our, where our target is, that we can start using the other funding sources, and then we had the five-point-seven million, which is ESSER three, which we have until twenty-twenty-four, so it's great to see that as one funding source ends, like in twenty-two with the first ESSER one, that we have twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four, and that the allowable use of funding is kind of continues throughout to help us support this different initiative and efforts in our grant application. And any questions or answers, and I know Mr. Rider is gonna follow up in his part and go into more specifics about funding.
Any questions for Dr. Hollerin and what we've gone over with ESSER three so far? I will say for point of clarification, just so we are aware, yes, the three-point-eight is sitting in Omega, but it's locked down, we can't touch it yet, so even though they've put it out there, it's kind of like, hey, here you go, but we can't touch it yet, so, so we really don't have access, we have it, but we don't have it yet. Thank you, Dr. Hollerin. All right, moving along, up next, to continue the ESSER three discussion will be Mr. Rider.
Thank you, good evening. Is this the ESSER or the financial state? Oh. Okay, okay, so following up with Dr. Hollerin, this, my, my aspect of the ESSER three funding is a little different, couple of the, brand-new, never-before requirements for this thing is that, for all of you, information as well, whenever the city of Franklin has a budget amendment that exceeds one percent of their budget, they have to have a public hearing, and our budget is part of theirs, so our funding is going to cause theirs to go up by more than one percent, so they have to have a public hearing as well. So, since we both have to have a public hearing on this thing, I thought it would be a good idea if we had it together, if we had the public hearing together so we could knock it out at the same night, so, so there's a lot of things, the public needs, like, to be in the tidewater news seven days preceding the public hearing, and they only publish once a week, so you gotta get the copy to them on Monday, so, so the finance committee, and so in between these dates here is what I had as April thirtieth is the award date, and when they say the award, I mean, they sent the money to the state of Virginia and it's sitting there, so that's your starting date, so thirty days later in the purple, the safe return plan was, was submitted, and then sixty days from April thirtieth is June thirtieth, and that's, I figure, when we have our finance committee meeting, that's when we'll probably finalize everything that we've been talking about all June. Then, I would recommend, I highly recommend, that we get with the city council and try to attend the, have our public hearing and their public hearing on their July twelfth city council meeting, it's a Monday night, so on July twelfth at their city council meeting, the next one's July twenty-sixth, so the problem is, if you, if we have it on July twenty-sixth, that only gives us, us, me, four days to take in all the comments and how we're gonna change our application, and, and submit it, and submit the plan by July thirtieth. Now, the application isn't due until September first, so, you know, we have all of August to get the application in, but it's that, it's that July thirtieth, once we submit that plan to the VDOE, you know, and from all that, all the numbers will come in, and that's how the application's gonna get filled out, we don't have to wait until September first, if it's all ready to go on July thirtieth, I'll, I'll submit them both, actually. So, so I only, I only had two, two things in there for the city council meeting, just to let everybody know that those are the city council meetings in July that we could use, I would really highly recommend we go with the July twelfth one.
One, if I can, Mr. Rider, one issue that we would have with that July twelfth date?
Yes.
Is that our organizational meeting for the board, because the new terms for any school board seats that are up for reappointment, from July one to our first meeting in July, which is July fifteenth, we do not have a board chair, because we do not organize until the fifteenth.
Well, there's, there's no work session in July?
Can we have one? July eighth, oh, well, then we're done. We're good, never mind.
All right, we'll have a board. See, just in the nick of time, you guys are organized on the eighth, and first thing is a joint work session with the city.
We did that intentionally, yes.
Yes, yes, I knew I had that date in there for a reason.
Yes.
So, like, another thing, like, no other federal funding stream has, this particular funding stream requires us to have, not the city, but us, to have public hearings on how, how we doing, you know, when we get this plan together in July, six months later, we have to report out to our constituents how we spent the money, how does it compare to what we said it was gonna, and they, they give us input, and then from the input, we might have to amend this thing, so you can see, we might have four or five amendments, if everything's going according to plan, I don't foresee us amending this thing that many times, but it's a lot of money, and that's why the government, the federal government put in this requirement that we report out to the public. So these are the dates, so April thirty was the award date, so six months later is October, and then six months later is April, October, April, October, and then April twenty-twenty-four is, would be the last public hearing because that thing runs out after the next October meeting would ordinarily be had on this little schedule thing. So though, that's, that's the public hearing requirement, and so for the month of June, before we hit that June thirtieth finance committee meeting, we have to come up with a plan, the overall plan, and, you know, that's a, that's a, that's a big blank slate because, well, it's not really, five-point-seven million, twenty percent has to be used for learning loss, so there's a plan there, we need one, that plan, we already had the opening plan, and then this thing here is a third plan, so there's really three plans with this thing. So if we start out with five-point-seven, we spend a million-one on the mandatory twenty percent learning loss, that gives you at least five, four-and-a-half million to spend. On my third presentation tonight, I'll be going through a concept that we use a particular sum of this CARES funding to fund a new teacher salary schedule, and over three years, it would cost about a million-three, so out of the four-and-a-half, minus a million-three, it leaves you with three-point-two still to go. Now, these funding streams from the CARES Act and ESSER, they all are basically paying for the same stuff, so here, this is a concept, by the way, there's nothing to approve tonight, this is just, if we want to continue on with spending the way we're spending, the CARES stream funding one, this first stream, is being spent on this stuff right now, and custodian, we had, we hired extra custodians to clean the schools in between everything, the guidance counselors for the mental health of the students, the human resource specialists, the bus driver salaries, that they have to, you know, drive a lot more, believe it or not, to deliver the meals for the most part, the grow-your-own-stipends and assistant principal and a coordinator federal programs. So this is, this is a set of expenditures that we will consider when we meet with all of the people, and so when we have our big finance committee meeting, which is probably gonna have a lot more people than just us three, you know, we'll, we'll nail down some more of this stuff, because what we present, obviously, at the public hearing has to be defended, so to speak, this is why, this is why we came up with it, and then they're gonna, the, you know, the voters will have their opinions, the city will have their opinions on how we should be spending this money, and so I'll be able to take all that in that night and then come up with our plan for the July thirtieth. So, if you, if you, if you use half a million dollars for all this stuff here over the, over the, you know, till September twenty-twenty-four, that still leaves two-point-seven that we have to come up with a plan, you know, a plan for, one possible thing would be replacing the module B at the elementary school. And that's where I, that's where we leave off, a million-three completely, you know, I have no idea what we're gonna spend it on, and that's why we have to have more meetings. So this, this gets us going, it's a lot easier to look at something and poke holes in it than to come up with it from, from white paper, so that's why I brought this, this hypothetical here. But insofar as this, this thing here, our recommendations are, the one, the first recommendation is that as a board, you need to decide whether we want to have a joint public hearing or have our own public hearing, and if you do want to have a joint public hearing, we need to contact the city and ask them if July twelfth would work for them at their city council meeting.
How does the board feel about that, would you prefer to have separate, are you comfortable with having a joint public session at their July twelfth meeting?
What are the pros and cons?
Pro is we get it, get both knocked out at one time.
Right.
I can't, I can't think of one con to it.
Yeah, if the city were to have a public hearing on this funding stream, they would need us all there as material witnesses or, 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 you know, to, well, Jeff, what do you, what, what, what's your plan? So it's kind of like, it's strange that how they would have to, they would probably have to defer everything to us anyway, so I would think that they would want to have this, but we have to kind of, as you know, it's, you know, we have to kind of reach out to them, we have to, we really should decide tonight whether you're gonna do it or not, and if you are, we need to reach out to them pretty quickly.
What happens if they say no?
We'll have our own public hearing.
Okay, but they still have to have one in order for us to be in compliance?
No, they have to have one in order to receive a budget amendment of more than one percent, so their public hearing, they could say, well, the school division came with us with some new funding, and it's gonna be more, it's gonna be five-point-eight million dollars, and does anybody have any questions? It could be that simple, and somebody say, well, what's it gonna be spent on, and they're gonna say, school stuff, they're gonna, you know, they had their own public hearing, you, now, if it does, it depends, is theirs before ours, because they could say, well, you can go to their public hearing and find out, or they can say they had theirs and they explained it, and, so, we've never, this has never happened before, never in the history of this division has there been a two, one reason for both entities to have a public hearing, so.
Is this funding, this is an addition to your regular, normal hearing?
Yes, and it's so much that they felt that it requires a public hearing.
Is there, I guess, is there a question on how the current budget is being suspended? Are those kind of questions gonna come up? This is, in other words, would these funding replace prior coming?
Could, I think, I think that's a, could it come up? It would come up from a city council member, and this is actually intended as a public hearing, so this would be where the public would come forward questioning.
Right, and it could get, you know, I'll tell you, for, you know, board members know better than I, you, you have to be ready for any question, any question, like, you know, why is, if this, if this thing is, you know, point number twenty that Dr. Hollerin put up there, anything for the continuity, blah, 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 of your division, that means you can spend it on anything, so, and that's where they're gonna, why aren't you spending it on, why aren't you spending it on, you know, where'd you come up with these priorities? And so you gotta be able to, you know, address all those questions, public hearings are not the funnest of times.
And that's what we say, ask Mr. Rider, just kidding.
I'll handle them.
With these funding sources, well, I already know the answer, but I'll ask it anyway, is there a possibility that city council could push back and say, we're going to decrease their allocation to us?
Well, first of all, for this fiscal twenty-twenty-two, they've already adopted their budget, so that's not gonna change. Would they, hmm.
Could it impact future budgets?
Right.
Could, I guess it could, it could, they, they, they could come to us in March of next year and say, so, you know, or, to the, every six months. next year and say, so, you know, or the, the, to the, every six month public hearing, they're, they can come to the public hearing and poke holes. You know, well, how, how much have you, how much did you say you were gonna spend? Million two. How much have you spent? A million? Amanda, yeah, cut their budget by 200,000 next year. I mean, they could do that. But, uh, we hope not. Especially since there's a non-supplanting rule in this particular funding. You, we are able to supplant. The city was very quick to point that out to us, that we can supplant, which means we can take regular expenses that we've just been paying from three years ago and pay them with this money, at least for a little while. So it, it can get, it can get dicey. It can. I'm just glad that this year's, is adopted by them, ours is adopted, so we've got 12 months to, you know, figure this out.
So do we need a motion or a consensus?
We need a consensus to, um, if we want to go ahead, or whether we, if we want to go ahead and look at a joint session with them, a joint public meeting on the 12th of July, or if we wanna do something else. We don't need a motion, just a consensus by the board, because all we're doing is we're directing Tammy to go ahead and reach out, Ms. Moore to go ahead and reach out, and try to get that, Ms. Moore and Mr. Ryder to reach out and try to get that scheduled.
I support that.
Are we all in agreement?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, let's look at the 12th then, Mr. Ryder, if you would, to do a joint public hearing.
Okay. Alright, very good. Thank you. Okay, next up is the, the May 30, the May financial statements. Um, this is the last month, uh, before we get to the last month. And, um, this is where we, I'm gonna go through the, I'm just gonna go through the financials with you real quick, because the, the real important one is the last slide. So this is, this is fund 10, this is just where we're at right now. Um, we're supposed to be at the, you know, we're, we're shooting for our $703,000 deficit target by June 30th. Um, we're, we're at half a million positive, so we gotta go 700 negative, so, so we gotta go a million one, you know, in the next, you know, four weeks in June, and we have a lot of stuff that's gonna make that happen. Um, I mean, we got, you know, like, wrote a $264,000 check for the mods the other day, we're gonna write a $288,000 for the toilets, 194 for the alarms, and the, so it's gonna, it's gonna disappear in June pretty quickly. Um, a lot of, a lot of things. Um, and for the first time, and for another first for Franklin City, um, when I asked our payroll specialist, you know, when do you process, you know, the July and August payrolls for the teachers? And we push them back into the prior year. I said, when do you ordinarily do that? She says, well, after the June 30th payroll. I said, I have no, we have no time to react to anything. If, if our estimates are off, that's it, it's done, now, now what? You know? I said, call our DA and ask him, why don't we do those this week? Because what happens is she, pre- those people are, have, are already on the payroll, even if they resign, they're still being paid through the end of, you know, so everyone's gonna get paid one way or the other, so why don't you do them now? And that's a heck of a lot less estimating that I have to do. And she's, oh, I never thought of that that way, and so that's what we're doing. So by the end of tomorrow, she'll have all of the Julys and the Augusts posted. And so now I've only gotta estimate the two June payrolls, and we can zero in on this thing pretty quick, or pretty close, pretty closely, closely. So, uh, the textbook fund, um, we're gonna end up with a, you know, actually a larger balance than we did at the beginning of the year, because the science is gonna have to be pushed off, because the vendor couldn't deliver in this fiscal year. So, uh, I think Burkhulter will have that in July or August or something like that. Um, fund eight, the nutrition fund, um, again, you know, it's, it's doing great. You know, it's positive, it rolls over, it never goes anywhere, so, um, we'll probably have to have an excess spending plan, I'm guessing around 136,000. Um, we just gave all these guys, uh, raises a couple of board meetings ago, so that'll, that'll get chewed up next year. And, uh, Melissa Vargas already has some new kitchen equipment that she's sent me. Um, the grants, um, the grants are, are doing okay, it's just that, um, you know, again, we, you know, the million three negative is because we haven't, uh, we don't have the, uh, reimbursements, all the reimbursements. Remember, we always spend this stuff before we get reimbursed, so we're always in a deficit for the most part, until the grants eventually end. So there's noth- there's, that's not, there's nothing to be concerned with. Uh, the overall is nothing more than the tally of the, of the, all, all of the other ones combined. Um, and then, so here, here's the, the all-important, um, estimation. Um, boy, that is small. So, um, so what it is, is, um, uh, these columns here to the right of the green bar, uh, I, the things to the left of the green bar are the, as the same financials, only I, I got rid of a lot of the columns, because we don't need them. All I need to know is where are we at, and where do we need to be at seven, to get to the 703,000. Uh, and so, um, there's a bunch of other stuff that we're specifically, almost by hand, putting these numbers in to get this, to get us to that deficit figure. Um, so now, we come to a decision that the board will need to make tonight, and that is, uh, in order for us to get to that, um, we have a funding source in one of our CARES Act that we had about $92,000 for retention stipends. And that works out to only be about $400 per person. So, um, we have some scenarios that, um, we wanted to present to you that, uh, as it, as it sits right now, I'm at 533,000 here, and so we still have 170 to go. So I have a pile of purchase orders on my desk that I can use if I need to. But before I do that, they don't have to be spent right now, but they could. So if we pay a thousand dollars per employee, uh, it works out to about 179,000 dollars, 92 of it's gonna come from the CARES Act, so out of operating funds, I still need to spend another 170. So of the operating funds, if we give a thousand per person, we can spend 86. If we have 1,200 per person, we can spend 122 of the 169, and that darn near puts us right at where we need to be for the year. Um, at this moment, uh, we can't go with the 2,000 or 1,500 per employee, because that puts us actually in a larger deficit. That puts it at 709, and you don't want the city coming back up to somewhere. So that's how, that's how you read this thing, Warren. Negative 533, we need another negative 170 to get to the 700,000 dollar deficit. And if we pay, if we pay 1,200 dollars per employ- employee for retention stipends, we'll get there. So the only, the only recommendation, ordinarily, with a financial presentation, I, there's no recommendations, it's information, but this time, um, superintendent had, had actually asked for a recommendation that we pay retention stipends in the amount of 1,200 dollars, uh, to the employees who are returning next year to retain them. Um, and we process that on the June 15th payroll, which we don't have a lot of time, because it's like 166 people we gotta put in all these figures for.
I think that's a wonderful idea. Yeah, any questions for Mr. Ryder or comments in regards to that?
Why the 15th instead of the last payroll? I missed that.
Oh, why not, why, why do it now instead of the last payroll?
Right.
Um, it helps with, it helps with getting the, um, uh, the estimates. See, I have about, still have about 19 estimated expenses that have to come in, and the more I know...
Okay.
...the less I have to estimate. That's why I ordered Angie process those payrolls, 'cause that's a gargantuan 2.1 million dollars. If I'm off by even 50,000 dollars, you know, I'm blown out of the water. So you gotta get this. So she's putting all that in, I'm like, okay, that's less to, less to guess. It's less to guess. So, um, so this, this thing here would, would help with the, um, you know, with the retentions, but if you get it on the June 15th, then it's really on the June 15th. Uh, I don't know, when's our next board meeting? 18th, I think? Something like that. Uh, that's the meeting that, you know, we should be, it, that's 703, we should be rated at the 703, and then all purchases are stopped till the end of the year.
And at the 1,200, that still leaves a little bit of a cushion.
It does.
Which is good.
It does, yeah. And so you, uh, yeah, waiting to the last payroll of the year is, you know, that's really, I, I, I can't operate that way.
Just cuts it too close.
It's just too close. There's not, there's no time to react.
Um, I know in the past, for bonuses and that sort of thing, that the language around the word employee had been clarified. Um, is this just instructional? Is this everyone? Is this part-time?
No, it's everyone. It's everyone.
So...
Everyone who's returning. So if people are retiring or res- resigning, we're not paying to retain them.
Right. But we have community members who, you know, coach and do other services for the school, who are not part of Franklin City Public Schools, but they were, they go, they return year after year. And I know that there was some need for some clarifying language, if I'm not mistaken, at one point in the past, because it was open to include all of the part-time or contract people.
Hmm.
Or is it just assumed that since their contract ends at, on June 30th, then they're not an employee until they get voted in again?
Yeah, it's, uh, well, it includes the drivers, which are kind of part, part...
Yeah.
Includes nutrition workers.
And nutrition, and actually, nutrition comes out of the nutrition fund, so that's, you know, that's a bit. Um, you know, I had Angie create the list, because she takes that, all of that into account. And she did mention that in the past, we've had problems paying these, 'cause people got mad that they were left off and stuff, so, um, there's no time for another committee, finance committee meeting to go over. Remember the list?
Uh-huh.
Um, we were going over the list, uh, the actual list at the meeting, so, um, I guess my question is, would you like those people to receive this?
In, in my head, they're no longer, I mean, their contract is up June 30th, and they're not employees again until...
Because we have to go back and approve.
Right, because we have to go back and approve. But I do recall, and I think the bigger issue was that they were told they were getting something, and then didn't receive it. And that's a big difference. Like, if you don't think you're getting it, that's fine, but if somebody says, hey, guess what, guess what you're getting, and then you don't, then that's an issue.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I only say that because it had happened in the past. I, I think that the people who are working every day in the school systems, like, that's the spirit of how I see this. But I just didn't know if there needed to be clarifying language.
Because if, if it is, let's say it's a basketball coach, for example, there's, their retention stipend could be more than their coaching stipend.
Yeah.
If they received one.
Yeah. And I, I don't, I'm not seeing the spirit of this. I'm not seeing them, yeah, right.
So in, in, in the spirit of that, then I would think that whomever makes the motion, the motion would be made to, um, for the amount of 1,200 per continuing contracted employee, because those that are on contract, whether it is, um, nutrition, whether it is a bus driver, whether it is a teacher, um, they have that contract from year to year, and they've already signed their contracts for next year.
Okay, so then my question is, continuing, like, new teachers, and maybe Dr. Holleran, you could help with that. Are they on a continuing?
Yeah, there is that language.
They're not continuing the first, like, five years.
Right. So are those who, that we talked about earlier, those who started the next 2022 year?
No, I'm talking about anyone who is, who started this past year as of zero, with, that's their first year with us. Before they're on a continuing contract, don't they have to be with the division for three or five years?
And I think what we talked about, Ms. Ryder, was those who signed their contracts are being sent out next week and return their contract to continue as an employee, not the type of contract they have.
So maybe, may, would it make more sense, Ms. Johnson, if it was 1,200 per employee with a signed contract for the 2021, 2022 year? A returning employee with a signed contract for the 2021, 2022 school year?
Yes.
Does that make more sense?
It does to me, because it eliminates all the question of the other.
So then what about new hires? New hires aren't included in that?
No, because this is a retention bonus. So this would be only those that are on staff right now that are coming back for next year.
Let's say someone coaches tennis, and they get 800, and that's all they do. Do you think they would be paid on a W2 or a 1099?
If it's above 600 in a year, they're supposed to get a 1099.
That's not gonna differentiate enough, I don't think.
I like your modified suggestion.
For the, to, to change the wording so that we are, um, approving the payout of retention stipends in the amount of 1,200 per returning employee with a signed contract for 2021, 2022?
Right.
Does that sound...
As you stated.
I so move.
You actually can.
I so move.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve retention stipends in the amount of 1,200 per returning employee with a signed 2021, 2022 contract. Any questions? Hearing done, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright, uh, my last, uh, my last presentation, uh, has, is been born out of, um, a recent, uh, rash of resignations and, uh, some very, very difficult to fill teacher positions. And so, um, we, I think we had, actually went through this at the, uh, finance committee meeting, and, um, so what, what this is, is, uh, we have our, our salary schedule, all the way over at the left for teachers. Uh, right to the right of the blue line is the Suffolk Fiscal Year 2021, uh, salary schedule for 10 months, and, for 10 months, employees, and, uh, and so that, that's the 2021 one, but then we read a newspaper article where they're going to the one in yellow where it says, what if? And so... At our, our first level is 41,050, Suffolk's is at 45, they're going to this for fiscal year 22. So if they're going to this, the difference between, you know, theirs at this whatever, and that and our, it's like, you know, a 6,000 dollar difference. And now, I know these are s- this is just the way their schedule accelerates step by step. That's why these amounts are so weird. It's like, well, why is this 6,000 more than our step? But this is only 5,122 more than our step. Well, because we kind of copied the Southampton steps, and their, their difference between each step is different than Suffolk's difference between steps. So the difference is like, and so, you know, they, they, they jump all over by 5,400 at this level, this one's 5,800, this one's 6, back to 6,100, 7,000, 8,000, 9, 10,000 dollars, 17 years. Uh, they're gonna be making 10,000 dollars more in Suffolk than they do at our place. Now, so there's two, uh, there's two, uh, there's two philosophies here in presentation. One is, um, we would like to, in superintendent's preparation, is to take our salary schedule to this column. The other one that came out of the finance committee is, let's take the difference and pay it in two, again, retention stipends in the year. So take, you know, and I have, I rounded them off for these other than, so you're gonna get 5,893 divided by two, Bob, you know, let's just use some easy to, you know, we can screw, we can mess around with these. So if you give them 3,000 in December 31st, that hopefully incentivizes them to stay until then, and then another 3,000 June 30th, and then another 3,000 the next December. And so you just split it up into ongoing retention stipends. Rather than giving it to them upfront, you give it to them twice a year, the same, pretty much the same thing. So what happened with this thing, and so... So what happened with this thing, and so this is something I think I presented at the, a, a board meeting earlier. They calculate about the impact of going to the what-if column is about four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And, uh, as you saw out of the CARES stream, you know, the S R three, the, the, the big one. Um, four hundred and thirty-six times three is about a million three. So we can, we can fund this out of the S R three. There's an all-important item twenty. I should probably memorize this. Other activities that are necessary to maintain operations and continuity of services and continuing to employ existing staff. That was written that way when the first CARES Act came out, because they didn't want people going unemployed. So, um, so, uh, so there it is. So up there is that, and then so this thing times three years, well, this is the work on this. It's a million three, leaving plenty of, uh, you know, S R three dollars to be spent still. And then, so then the all-important question of what happens in twenty twenty-five. And so we, we are confident that the state funding will probably come around by then. Um, I'm, I'm thinking that within, you know, three more weeks, whenever they release their calculator, uh, you know, that four hundred and thirty-six, two hundred and fifteen might come from the state, so it's almost a negligible amount. So this thing absolutely can be funded over the next three years. Um, but again, see, we gotta, talk about the balance, we have to go to the public hearing and this has to pass muster. I mean, if we get a revolt, that, no, no, you, we don't want you to spend it like that, well then, can't really do this. But we are going to get the money, one way or the other. The federal government is gonna give us the money. Um, this is one of the things that we, is absolutely an allowable expense. So, um, and it's to address, uh, you know, a very important problem that we have right now, and that is the, the teacher shortage. I know it's strange for me to not be talking about bus drivers, but for the first time, talking about teacher shortage now. And so, um, superintendent's recommendation is to go with the what-if column as a salary schedule, uh, for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Ms. Moore, can you scroll back up to that, um, schedule, salary schedule, please?
It's so large, I have to put it into slide. Do you want this one or the?
Yeah, that, that's fine, that's fine. So that we're, well, actually scroll the next one up. That way we're at the top. There we go.
Is there a advantage or disadvantage to doing a stipend versus salary, current salary?
Uh, that's more of a philosophical question because.
It, it, it depends, um. One of the benefits to doing a, doing it as a stipend is that it's not applicable to the same, um, items having to come out of it. It's just subject to your FICA. Um, the other thing is you're not locked into it from year to year, because if something were to happen, if something were to happen and our salary scale is at the, say, the forty-seven for the starting, um, teacher. Um, it's very difficult to, one year ago, oh, we're actually going to reduce our salary scale. So you, we, yes, you got paid forty-seven last year, we're gonna have to drop back to forty-two as a starting salary. Um, the, so the stipend, if you did not have a funding source, you could say, we don't have the money for stipends this year, so we're not paying stipends this year.
So, you see that, you call it for three years, or we have a question right now, that, uh, we're, we're not sure what's gonna happen in three years.
Right, but then the other.
We're not over the obligation.
Right, then the other flip side of that, though, is if you're actually trying to recruit, well, what's your starting salary? Well, we're at forty-one. You know, they're not, the, the, the stipend, you know.
But retention versus recruiting.
Right.
A- a- and even how you say it, right? Well, it's forty-seven, forty-one's your base, you get two three thousand dollar stipends.
Right.
It's still forty-seven.
Is, are some of the benefits determined by salary? So like, if we increase the salary, would it benefit that, like, the invisible cost?
Oh, just FICA.
Just the FICA.
Are we voting on this tonight or next, next session?
They are asking for a, um, a recommendation, they do have a, the superintendent does have a recommendation and is requesting that, um, we look to adopt that what-if column, that salary scale, that proposed what-if salary scale. And, and I will say, I did have a conversation, we had a conversation, um, in our finance committee meeting. And also I've had a conversation with Dr. Sterling about this. And where that does, that is higher than Suffolk. I mean, we're, we'll just go ahead and, and be honest. It's higher than Suffolk's current salary scale. Suffolk is also adding, um, to their salaries. They're doing an increase for this upcoming year. I think it's, I, I can't remember if they're doing two and a half or three. Um, so that's going to bump them up, even if it's two and a half. Calculator, like I said, math is not my strong suit. You're looking at, that's gonna bump up to forty, just over forty-six. Um, so the intent was to go ahead and get it set at forty-seven as that starting for, and that way we wouldn't have to look at adjusting to play catch-up every year. We're already at a, a place where we can stay for a few years and not have to make adjustments to salary scales. Because anyone that's, those of us that have been on the board for a few years now, this is something about every other year that we've been having discussions with and looking at, and we've had to make several adjustments.
So I guess I'm confused at this point, because the what-if column is an adjustment to the salary scale. But the, the column on the far right is actually, instead of doing a salary scale adjustment, we would give, um, bonuses twice a year.
Right.
And I thought from the previous discussion that it would probably be a better, more logical idea to do the two bonuses. Um, because if we don't have funding, then we don't have to worry about dropping our salary scale back down.
And we, we have had that discussion in the past, we have.
Okay, so for tonight, are we looking to do the salary scale, or are we looking to do the retention bonuses twice a year?
Well, the superintendent, uh, recommended the set, the what-if column. But if it's voted down, then would you wanna go with the biannual retention?
Right, so the superintendent's request is that we look at setting the salary scale, not the retention bonus option.
It's not both, it's one or the other.
Right.
And keep in mind, right, and this would not change our request to the city for the following fiscal year for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, because this is looking to be paid out of, not to pay, not to fund this.
Right.
Because this will be paid out of S R three.
Right.
Um, and for the supplemental year after that as well. Um, so that would carry us through three fiscal years.
So then the question is, what's more important, retention or recruiting? Or is it both and?
Well, there's always that cost associated with the employees and training, that sort of thing.
But then when you look for the stability of the diven- of the division, then it's retention.
Right. Well, and, and the other side of that is looking at a retention bo- you know, a retention stipend, I don't like calling it a bonus. Retention stipend, um, is that necessarily gonna get people in the door? Whereas changing, adjusting a salary scale may actually impact both. So that's another consideration.
Well, if you're looking at a new hire, a new hire is not looking at retention, a new hire is looking at, what are you, what are you going to offer me versus a Southampton or a Suffolk? Where is my benefit? Where do I receive the most benefit money-wise and or benefits-wise? So I say the what-if column.
So you're saying to go with the salary scale adjustment versus the, uh, the stipend, the retention stipend?
Right.
And my B point is, because we have this large stream of money, yes, I know that we don't know where we're gonna be in three years. But if we're able to continue it, then when a retention stipend, if we did it that way, at the end of the retention stipends, we can look at then elevating the, um, salary scale. Because then at least we'll have a better understanding as to whether or not our budget can handle it.
How does, um, benefits like health insurance, is it good to us for base on salary or?
No, no. The premiums are independently calculated based on claims.
Mr. Ryder, um, seems like I remember there was something about funds in the state budget possibly for salary rate for salary increases for this coming year.
Yes. Yes, in prior calculators that the state issued. Um, the governor's own calculator had, had it in once, and then three months later it came out. And so the one in, uh, March ninth actually has two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, but that, that's not, that's not adopted into law yet. Why they're waiting till the end of June, I don't know. I, I think I know, they want to nail down exactly how much sales tax came in so they don't have to send a, a new calculator later. So they're, they're trying to get much more, uh, definitive numbers before they send it up to all the divisions.
So now if, okay, if, if we were to go the route of looking at a stipend, then that would not count as us actually getting raises, correct? As far as that would go within the governor's budget. But if we actually changed our salary scale, then that's considered us giving the raises, correct?
Exactly, absolutely, yes.
So that may play into whether we get, if that is, and in fact finalized in the state budget, it would impact whether or not we would get that money to be passed on to the staff.
Right.
That could actually compensate for part of, and then we'd have to go back and look at spending more money out of S R for other things and.
Of course, yeah, yeah, right.
Okay, I think this is my last question. Wondering how it would impact the employee. Will they be taxed at a higher rate if it's a stipend as opposed to their salary?
No, usually those, we go through with an average federal rate and we u- we apply that. So it doesn't, it's not like it used to where you put that thing in on their set, on that, on that payroll. And then annualizes that thing as some ridiculous amount. No, we, we, we cap the federal tax rate when we do that. Anytime, anytime we pay lump sums, we take that into consideration.
I just don't want it to be detrimental.
Right, right.
Any other questions, discussion?
I'm still not clear on this, these options. It appears one option is to go with the changing salary scale, which would be permanent. Versus given a retention bonus twice a year. So the funding for three years comes from temporary funding. What happens after three years?
Right, what happens after tw- twenty twenty-five? Um, we are fairly certain that the state funding will be probably increased to cover most of this. Because it's, it's out there now, it's just, and I would know right now for definit- I would be able to show you the calculator. And, you know, the four hundred and thirty-six, it would be reduced by two fifteen, and Dr. Sterling and I, you know, we can find a hundred and ninety, the remaining hundred and ninety somewhere in the budget to, to make up for that. So we, we're, we're fairly confident more than half of this will be paid by the state in the future.
Usually when the state gives us salary money, they give it to us for one year. And we have to eat it every year after that. I don't know. We all wanna give teachers as much as we can, and I certainly do. I don't want us to get stuck at a point that we have to cut something or lay off teachers to pay more.
To the remaining teachers, right?
It's a dilemma.
It is, because, I mean, if you saw how many resigned in the last week or so, it's like, oh my gosh, you got, you know, we gotta stop this. We gotta stop this, we gotta do something.
So is most of the, are most of the resi- and I asked Dr. Holleran this, but I'm gonna ask you as well, are most of the resignations connected to salary?
Hmm.
As best as you can tell.
Gosh.
And it's, it's funny that you ask that, because, um, I actually recently had a conversation with, um, V S B A. And they were saying that it's such a combination across the state. Um, it's not just one definitive reason. Pay, looking at what teachers are paid within the state is a factor. Um, there's been a bleed-off of teachers because of COVID. Um, they're just ready to get out of it because of everything that COVID has thrown into the kink. Um, aging staff, ready, you know, I've got my twenty years, twenty-five years in, I, I'm ready, I'm ready to, to get out. I can go do something else. Um, or I just wanna retire. So it's, it's a trifecta, I guess is a good way to look at it. It's a perfect storm. Unfortunately, that's been created, and COVID just happened to fall in the mix and, and add that, that last side of that triangle. But with us, um, with what we pay, and we are small, um, and we know that, and we are very cognizant of that, but, you know. I drive to Chesapeake to go shopping. Yes, I do shop in the city, but I, you know, I drive to Chesapeake to go shopping. Santa Clara, go to mall. That's thirty minutes away. I can drive thirty minutes and get paid seven thousand dollars more a year.
So then what would give the division the best advantage? The what-if column or the retention column?
I don't know that I can fully answer that. I would have to, I would actually have to defer to my finance and H R department.
If, if we, except, uh, with, uh, with the stipend option, you could still be disitied in the year, but did turn it, roll it over to the salary, correct?
We, we could, I mean, it, we can always come back to the board.
More information, where it can be, those things are uncertain, or? I think we're in agreement of doing some kind of breaks, so we should put this stipend on, and actually salary, so.
Dr. Holleran, um, from your perspective as, from H R, um, which would have the greater impact, um, from a staffing perspective? The, an adjustment to the salary scale or a retention bonus?
And I think it depends. I can sit here a hundred, but I don't hate for you to say something, I'm sitting like here. Because if you look at adjusting, I believe the what-if, that's just addressing teachers. Whereas if we look at our personal agenda, what's been happening, it's not just teachers, it's all staff that's impacted. So if you look at adjusting the schedule, that's for teachers, but the retention addressed all staff. So really that's what you're looking at, teachers or all staff. And I think all staff, because at all levels we see the retention needed.
Now, Ms. R-
That's my perspective. It's two different, because the what-if is only for teachers, correct? Which, but the stipends impact all staffs.
I didn't understand that.
So that column for the retention stipend, that would impact all staff or just the teacher's salary scale? Okay.
That's just these teachers, these staffs.
Okay, the ones that would be a ten-month employee on those staffs.
So from this, from the sa- the teacher's side, the teacher's salary scale, yeah. Which one, from the teacher perspective, would have the greater impact? Adjusting the salary scale or a retention bonus?
I honestly think the retention bonuses, the bonuses, because if you look at the, the salary scale, someone will see, people will come in at different levels. Whereas you, regardless of the level you come in at, you know, you're gonna get that set bonus, if that makes sense. I can come in and make forty-seven thousand a year, or I can come in making forty-eight. But if I see I'm gonna get three thousand in December and three thousand in January, I mean, regardless of where you come in at, you're gonna get that six or seven thousand dollars. That's my perspective. That's just my perspective, I mean, it looks.
Even if coming in, I know my base salary is gonna be that forty-one, knowing that I'm going to get that retention bonus come six months down the road, and then another six months down the road, which will get me to forty-seven overall.
Because the retention bonus, and that's gonna be guaranteed, and I believe that would hopefully be in like a contract or an agreement that they would sign, they know that it's coming out what if. That would help greatly with retain, with, um, retention, even with recruitment. I'm coming in at this amount, but in December I'm getting this and this, so I'm gonna make it forty-seven, forty-eight. And at least I know for this next year, I'm gonna have this additional funding, as Mr. Ryder referenced. It's not gonna impact the other areas of benefiting percentages of your salary that come out. And you'll actually end up bringing home more money if that's the case. Because the extra stipends in December, January might be impacted as deeply as definitely tax. End up coming out making more. And I might be with all the tax laws, but I'm just saying, I know, I don't know what we'll do for the income, I'm gonna ask about, so what are the different tax bracket that I can answer, I do not know. But they'll bring home more money versus the seven thousand being added to their salary because of all the, you are, all the other things that come out of it.
My recommendation, I live towards doing this plan. Then revisit it next year if we need to.
And, and keep in mind that whichever, whichever way we go, if we do, well, if we do go the route of the stipend, that doesn't mean that we can't come back next year and say, okay, instead of stipend, let's adjust salary scales. And then we don't have a stipend anymore, we have an adjusted salary scale. If we adjust the salary scale, it's gonna be kind of hard to backpedal and say, hmm, let's not have adjusted, let's not have that salary scale, let's transition back, but let's do a bonus for the difference. That's, that gets kind of difficult to do.
Right, and I'm not in a, a teacher's shoes, but if we started, like you said, at the retention stipend, and then use the next year to ask them, you know, what is important to you? Um, I, I certainly would like to eventually see us be more competitive with our salary scale. But if you got more money in your pocket, you know, one way as opposed to another, um, we're still getting them that money. I just don't want to put us in a bind in the future, and, and, yeah.
And we do have, Ms. Moore, correct me if I'm wrong, there is an employee survey that, that is out and about that we will be getting results from, um, in the future. Um, that may give us some good information moving forward, um, when looking at that and looking at salary scales as well. So that may come into play in giving us some information on maybe some things that we need to look at for that whole recruitment and retention as well.
So since we don't have the information from the survey, do we have to vote tonight? Can we table it until we get the results from the survey?
We can always table it, that's always an option. Um, where we are right now, um, if we do one or the other, it is going to require revisions to contracts, correct, Dr. Holleran? Um, if we're looking at, if we, if we change the salary scale for next year, it will require a revision to contracts that have already gone out. And we would want to give our wonderful H R department and our staff time to be able to do that before they, uh, July payroll hits. The stipend, would that require a revision as well to contracts?
No, stipend can just not go out in December, or it doesn't have contract days.
It'll cause you six months.
Okay. Is there any other questions or discussion?
Another advantage to stipends that you don't have to look at sustainability. For example, if there's a fluctuation like we were talking about with budget, you don't have to scramble to see how we're gonna fund this. I mean, the stipends, you just go away with the grant funding. And we know we have it at least for three years, they are, we're gonna find the funding. So that's the sure enough guarantee funding clock that we have until twenty twenty-four of stipends. And at least for three years, we can show the city that stipends have helped with recruitment or retention. So by twenty twenty-four, it's time for the budget again, you can have data to support the retention and everything, and help with requesting additional funding from the city.
Right, but then we don't get that money from the state.
That's, that's the only caveat.
A lot can happen in three years, but at least here.
Well, a lot can happen in a year.
Yeah, facts. I don't know, I, I, I'm thinking about that money that we won't be getting, um, from the state, but we've got federal money to cover stuff, so.
And why won't we get the money if we don't, you say?
If it's not a salary scale, the state gives money for salaries, like, it's like to help out. And usually it's like a, hey, go ahead and raise their salaries, and then we'll give you this little boost to help with that. And it's usually only for one year, but if we're doing it as a stipend and not a part of the salary, then our division wouldn't qualify for that.
And it's usually for only a portion, it usually doesn't fully fund a pay increase.
In three years or, or whatever times frame, that would still come up in here, right? I don't see where we're at.
Any other questions or discussion on this?
Sir Bob, the last column is the recommended stipend amount?
Yes.
Is that for the year, you're hoping for the year, or that's for the six, or?
That's the six-month figure. Yeah, so these.
These folks here, I just shaded very precisely the number change. Yeah, because the salary schedule, you know, you get six, six, seven, seven, so forty-five hundred times two is eight, nine thousand. And these guys, there's only five employees at this level, like, twelve thousand.
So then you actually get more with the retention bonus.
Because, yeah.
I tried to use the same figure. This is thirteen, yeah, thirteen, seven, so you get thirteen even. So they had a little less, a little more. Tried to pick, I just tried to, you just can't do one figure per day.
Right. Make it nice even numbers.
Unless, you know, you made it all three thousand for everybody, the longer you're here, you're still gonna get the same. I'm not sure.
I like encouraging people to stay longer.
Yeah.
Yep. All right, any other questions or discussion? All right, hearing none, I will open the floor for and entertain a motion, if anyone cares to make one.
I'm making a motion to accept the retention stipend.
Proposal. So we have a motion, we have a motion on the floor, let me make sure, let me clarify. We have a motion on the floor to accept the recommended retention stipends as presented by Mr. Ryder.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that motion passes, so we have, we are putting in place a retention stipend schedule per the proposal by Mr. Ryder.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. And keep in mind, as, as we have discussed, um, and Mr. Ryder, you put that on your plan for next year. We will, of course, look at that, we're all looking at salary scales every year. So if we see that is beneficial and that's, of course, the direction we want to stay in. Keep in mind, as a stipend, I do believe we have to approve that on every year, correct, Mr. Ryder? That's what I thought. Um, so it's gonna come back before us again next year anyways, and we may decide to do something different at that time. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Ryder, that was, that was a long one. All right, next up is the superintendent's report. And Dr. Sterling is not with us tonight, it looks like Dr. Holleran's gonna jump up and join us again.
Yes, good evening again, on behalf of Dr. Sterling, I'm presenting, presenting the superintendent's report. The first item to present and share are key aspects of the strategic plan in collaboration with V S B A. Um, completed items include survey teachers, students, staff, and community members, which I think was mentioned earlier tonight. Um, as well as, uh, community meetings being held and surveys sent to community, uh, meeting participants. As far as upcoming events and items, there are various, um, meetings, stakeholding, stakeholder engagement feedback sessions, as well as final presentations of the board. And then in that last column to the right, there's some additional community survey information that's noted there. And I was made aware that the numbers for the community member participants for May twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth are higher than the thirty-two and thirty-one participants. So I'm sure that additional, that information, correct, information will be sent out, uh, sent.
I believe, um, because I actually spoke with Gina Patterson, and I want to say the first session, the May twenty-fifth, there were ninety-nine participants.
Thank you for that. And then next, we have information about the free summer meals program that's available for all children eighteen and younger. And they'll be able to receive breakfast and lunch Monday through Friday. And on the next slide, you have a list of the days of the month, the cities and the locations where the meal program will be, um, distributed. And I believe that information will be posted on our website as well as being distributed to our families throughout the community. And then last but not least, we have our end of year celebration. I'll scoop for you, Ms. Moore. That's okay. Uh, end of year celebration that will take place, uh, next week on June tenth at Franklin High School. Uh, we will be celebrating retirees, teachers of the year, all teachers, and we invite all staff members and you all to come out to accept, continue to accelerate Franklin forward. So again, that's the tenth, and additional information will be sent, I believe, first thing tomorrow morning to all staff. And that concludes the superintendent's report. Any questions?
I don't think there are any, thank you very much for stepping in, Dr. Holleran, for that report.
You're welcome.
Moving along, next up is business by school board members, does anyone from the board have anything to share?
I attended the gifted committee, meeting on the twenty-sixth, and these are just some of the highlights from the meeting that we prepare all students for an opportunity, well, a suggestion was made to, to prepare all students for an opportunity to attend the governor's school. And that we would increase exposure to various areas. That we look at the whole child approach for acceptance into the gifted program. Um, all students are supported with transportation to gifted programs and that we increase in-person exposure as much as possible.
Thank you very much, Dr. Shelton.
Um, I just wanted to say that I had the opportunity to participate with the fundraiser for the athletic department that was hosted by, um, the culinary arts department instructor Kyle Cousins. And there was a great outpouring of community support for that. And, um, at my place of employment, without people even realizing that I had part of it, they're like, oh my gosh, did you get any of that, you know, that chicken from, from Franklin, that was awesome, I should have, you know, purchased more. Uh, so it's good to hear things like that from people who don't know that I have a connection, you know, here for that. Um, and I, I hope that it was able to net some decent funds for the athletic department because I know that we haven't had the gate, you know, sales because of COVID. Um, but I look forward to more opportunities from that culinary arts department. And, um, it was, it was great, if you all didn't get any, then, you know, hopefully there'll be a repeat at some point soon.
Yes, you missed out, if you missed out, you really did miss out, that was, it was very, very nice, they did a great job with that.
They did.
Anything else? Um, I want to thank Dr. Shelton for giving the report on the gifted meeting because I missed out on that because, uh, Mr. Holden and I were in, um, finance and building and grounds meeting. There's a lot of, of moving on, um, I will say, Mr. T has set the ground running. In more ways than one. So we, they are definitely moving along and, um, capital improvement committee, um, underneath that is moving along. Um, one thing that we do need to determine is, um, who is going to sit on that committee. I figure we're so close to the end of the year, and we're gonna have to, um, we're gonna have to go back through that whole organizational plan of the board in a month anyways, so we'll hold on that. It doesn't make any sense to put somebody in place for, for one meeting and then we change it all up. So, um, come July, we'll look at that, um, because that will go on, we'll, that building and grounds committee is one aspect of that. And then underneath that, we have the, um, capital improvement committee. And then we, we will not need to reappoint to the Charles Street Gym because that's a, um, special committee. So that can stay as is, and then, um, we'll also need to develop and really get that list going um, for the, um, subcommittee, eh, excuse me, the special committee regarding a new school. So we'll need to get that one running as well, so we'll look at that come next month. Um, graduation, and this is kind of bleeding over into upcoming events, but I did want to put it on the radar for right now. Um, all of us, all of the board members, um, that did respond back that were going to attend graduation. As you know, we were doing the throwback graduation, back to when a few of us, we won't name any names, right, Ms. Johnson?
Nope.
Uh, graduated, and it was going, it is supposed to be on the Armory Field. But Mother Nature, who chose to not give us any rain for a month, has decided that she wants to now give us rain um, on days that we don't necessarily want rain. So they are calling for rain tomorrow. Mr. Phelps, um, and I spoke this afternoon, and he is going to make the call, um, by noon tomorrow as to whether it will be on the field at Armory or not. If it is not on the field, it will be at the workforce center. And so that as many, because even though the governor has lifted restrictions, um, Paul, Camp Community College has indicated that it still applies to facilities of higher education. So they still have limitations on how many can attend. Um, based upon that, he asked if the board members would mind if it is held at the workforce center if we, I have to, because I have to speak. But if we would not attend, um, so that as many family members of the graduates as possible can attend to see their graduate. And I assured him that we were fully supportive of ha, of our graduates having their families with them for that opportunity. So I will text you all once I get the call from him as to if you show up in your regalia or whether you get to sit home and watch it in your pajamas. So be looking for a text from me probably around lunchtime tomorrow. Any questions on that?
Who has their pajamas on at six o'clock?
I, I do, but not tonight, I mean, I had to come here. We have had some Zoom meetings, just to.
Just gonna say, if I'm working remotely, I only need to look good from the top up, so.
I'm with you. I'm with you.
I apologize to you folks.
They want to be in their pajamas at six P M. too.
Yes, that being said, um, next, um, next item on the agenda, moving along, would be the V S B A, um, school board member of the year. We've had a discussion about that over the last month. Uh, V S B A has, um, three different awards that they look at. One is the, um, Board of Distinction, which requires each board member has to attend several things, um, within V S B A uh, for two consecutive years, so that one we do not, um, qualify for. One is school board of the year, that also has some requirements, um, of the board as a whole, as a collective, um, that we really do not qualify for. The last one is V S B A regional, um, board member of the year. Um, which does require that if a board member is, um, nominated, there are some requirements, and it's looking at that individual board member has to be an award of honor level within V S B A. And what that means is all of. Award of honor level within V S B A, and what that means is all of those things that we attend, like webinars and trainings. Like the master board training, the annual convention, the school law conference, webinars for, through V S B A. All of those have a point system assigned with them, and you just have to have a certain level of points. Um from that, we do have three board members, I believe, Ms. Moore, that do qualify. Uh that have enough points to be able to qualify. Um does any, does any board member have a problem with me sharing those three names? That would be Mr. Holt, Dr. Shelton, and myself. We do not have to nominate anyone, I will say that. So I am just putting this forth to the board in case we did want to nominate someone, because if, if any board member wanted to submit someone. The board has to take a vote and it has to be a unanimous vote.
Are we only allowed to submit one?
Yes, we are only allowed to submit one.
Can we ask them, can we submit two?
Their, their, their requirements require that we can only submit one per division. I wish, I, cause I would say send Mr. Holt and Dr. Shelton both, but I don't get to make that call. They, they have rules, and I guess I have to play by the rules.
Can we make a recommendation at this point?
Absolutely, if the board so chooses.
Yeah, all do we choose, can I make a recommendation? We good, yeah, all right, um I would like to recommend or nominate uh Mr. Holt for his many years of service for Franklin City Public Schools. And even though there was a hiatus, you know, he did serve in a different capacity, and now he's back, and I think that he is worthy of this recognition.
Does anyone wish to second that motion? We have a motion and a second to submit Mr. Holt for regional board member of the year. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, then, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Then we will definitely work on submitting Mr. Holt as V S B A regional board member of the year nominee from Franklin City Public Schools.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, board.
All right, next up is upcoming events, um of course, tomorrow is a big day in the division, um graduation. Um that has a big T B D. there, to be determined, um so like I said, we'll know by noon tomorrow. Um next up would be our. Regular meeting for the month, which will be on June seventeenth, that one will be virtual. Um with restrictions being lifted, of course, when we organize in July, we, one of the, one of the. Things that we do at that organizational meeting is also set the schedule for the meetings for the year. And we will also at that time, look at um meetings um for the future as well. Whether we're going back to all in person or whether we're gonna continue in in any kind of virtual capacity. Um V S B A master board training, we are going to have that postponed um due to some conflicts um that are coming up. So we're, I will be contacting V S B A tomorrow to look at having that postponed um to a future date, and we'll get back together on that date. So that we can all make sure that we are available for that. Last up is minutes from May twentieth, this is just for review, these will come back to us on the seventeenth for final approval. Along with the um policy updates. Any questions or discussion on anything else? All right, hearing none, then, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
A second?
We have a motion and we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, then, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much, everyone, for joining us, and have a good evening.
Very, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.